You are Lord of Lord and King of Kings, and we just ask that you would be with us today, Father God, and help us to appreciate the gift of life and to take advantage of the time that we have left to do those things, Lord God, that are pleasing in your sight. Those things would help to shape the world and make it a better place for all of us. We just thank you now for another opportunity to engage in this process, and we invite you to be with us. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Good morning. We have several visitors this morning. We'll first hear from Grants Administrator Regina Walker, then Terry Reynolds with Levitate will be talking about updating us on ARPA, Eris Beasley from Helping Montgomery Families Initiative, Chief Revenue Clerk Allison Holland, Parks and Recreation Director James Williams, and President Anne Sykes of the Montgomery Education Foundation, and Vice President of Development Director Becky Sanders with Liberty Learning Foundation. The items to be considered during the formal session are a resolution of the County of Montgomery to approve broadband study and sewer engineering services from the Montgomery Thrive Initiative, consider 2023 Homeland Security Grant application, consider 2023 SCAP grant application, consider grant application to a DECA for 2023 EV charging infrastructure grant program, consider donation of an electric golf cart to Carver High School, consider the sale of two Montgomery County Sheriff's Office vehicles to the Perry County Sheriff's Office, consider renewal of a lease agreement with Williamson Properties for the purchase of clay and gravel for the Engineering Department, consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies.
I had 3,000 for Triple J. I want to make that 6,500 in from designated.
So you want it removed from agencies?
And over to designated.
And increase it?
To 6,500.
There is also the addition of...that's all, okay.
Florence, did you get my 500 to D Y W?
Yes, and that's from agencies.
Correct.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education.
I have two, Florence, please. 5,000 to the Robert E. Lee Band. And 2,500 to the Robert E. Lee Football Team.
Is there anything else? Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue. Consider budget change request number two for the 2023 Buckmasters Expo. Consider budget change request number two for the County Commission. Consider budget change request number three for the Probate Judge's Office. Consider budget change request number one for the Recreation Board. Consider budget change request number two for the Sheriff's Office. Consider budget change request number one for the Youth Facility Juvenile Court. Consider position fill request for the Detention Facility for an Administrative Support Associate. Consider position fill request for the District Attorney's Office for a Legal Support Assistant. Consider position fill request for the Engineering Department for a County Road Maintenance Supervisor, County Traffic Control Technician One, County Road Equipment Operator One, County Road Equipment Operator One, Two County Road Equipment Operators Two, and a Bridge Maintenance Superintendent. Consider a position fill request for the Personnel Department for an Administrative Support Specialist. Consider a position fill request for the Probate Judge's Office for an Administrative Assistant. Consider a position fill request for the Sheriff's Office for an Administrative Support Associate. Consider travel training requests for the County Commission, the District Attorney, Personnel, Probate, and the Sheriff's Office. Regina.
Good morning. I have several items, so I'm going to look at the screen to make sure I'm on task. The first one is TAP. Okay. We are seeking your permission to apply for the Transportation Alternatives Grant. As indicated in your memo, this grant is a waiver rules item because the application is due on May 31st. I did not have, at the time of the memo, the match. The match is 20%. It's the state TAP, not the local NPO. We have two proposed projects, so I'll give you two different numbers, and we'll do our 20% based on which one you give me permission to do. The paving for Dean Park, the match would be 71,000. The paving for Montgomery County Activity Center, the match would be 59,000, for a combined total of 130,000.
So that's the 150,000 aside from the match covered the cost of either one of those projects?
The 150...are you on tap?
Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program.
Yes, sir.
150,000 is the total dollar amount of the grant?
I think that's a typo.
I'm sorry, that should have been in the ADM.
Yeah, we apologize about that.
I apologize.
The minimum for...the maximum amount that you can apply for through the state is $800,000 federal. So that's the maximum you can apply for. At the NPO local level, it is $200,000. But on the local level, you can submit more than one application.
So what are we expecting or applying for from the grant excluding the match?
The total amount that we're applying for?
The total amount? Hold on. I'm sorry. If you select both projects...I just got these numbers this morning, so I apologize. 650 thou.
Ignore that, do we?
We can't assume it's not. Do we proceed?
Mr. Chairman, I'm...
It would be 650,000 total.
Plus the R...R match monies, which is 130-ish.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm reluctant to entertain these grants that require matches coming up in the midterm. I mean, we never really budget for these things. We're usually doing budget changes or, I don't know where we're getting the money from, but seeking out places to get money from that we haven't really planned for. So in a grant like this one, it doesn't seem like the proper preparations have been made anyway in terms of what we're going to do if we got it. I'm just reluctant to rush it through, so I'm going to object to waiving rules on this.
If we got the grant, I'm sorry if I may, if it's okay.
Regina, we got the all-clear on the...it was a glitch in the fire alarm.
Thank you. If we receive the grant, we had two proposed projects because they were shovel-ready. One was the paving of the trail at Elton Endeen Senior Park, and the other one was the paving and improving usability of the parking lot at Montgomery County Activity Center because that parking lot is basically unusable, uninaccessible, when there's heavy rain. And both of these are perfect projects for TAP. Yes, sir.
No, please, thank you. The cost of the parking lot in South Montgomery, do you have the dollars amount for the cost?
I do. Construction is 225, PNE is 35, and CEI is 35.
225. One more time, please, I'm sorry.
Construction is 225, P is 35, and CEI is 35.
What about the paving of the trail?
The construction is 275, P is 40, and CEI is 40.
Regina, does time restraint this grant?
It does for this cycle. This grant application is due on May 31st for the state TAP, which has more money, I'm told, than the local TAP does. The local NPO will have a cycle coming up, but they have a max of, like Kendall shared, of 200,000.
Are these projects, if we do not receive these grant monies, are these projects that we will do or delay?
Our Parks and Rec...I'm not trying to put him on the spot, but our Parks and Rec Director James Williams has had paving the trail around Dean Park on his list for a long time to improve just people that go out there and walk and use that trail. When it get heavy rains, it make it kind of difficult to use that trail. So we were trying to utilize grant money to offset the cost of something that the county will eventually end up paying for anyway.
Does this grant money come around again based on your experience, Regina?
TAP is annual, Kendall. TAP is annual, so it'll come around sometime next year. I don't know that amount will be the same, but it'll come around again next year.
So we would get roughly $600,000 worth of work for $130,000 rough numbers?
Yes, ma'am.
And these openings are announced very sporadically, and that's the reason, you know, you have maybe a month to make an application.
Understood.
I pulled some numbers. I did some extra homework. I pulled some numbers from Felicia Young on the rentals at Dean Park, and they're averaging, just now with not a lot of people really knowing about it, every time we have an event out there, more people find out. They're averaging five to 10 events a month out there in rentals. So as we continue to have events and improve the usability of the park, we're hoping that that will also improve the...increase the rentals because it's a beautiful facility.
What dollar amount does that equate to? You have those dollars?
I do not. I'm sorry.
So we don't know exactly what the 20% match would be then?
She gave us...
We have the numbers for the 20% match, roughly, 130. If you do the two projects combined, and then the numbers if you break it out.
So $600,000 worth of work for $130,000?
Yeah, so, you know, bottom line, if we're going to do this, we probably need to do it now because we may not have the opportunity again.
Yes, sir.
If we decide we're not going to do it, then that's different, so.
Correct.
I'm not going to...I'm objecting to waiving the rules.
Yes, sir.
All right, let's go to the next one then.
So just to clarify, so we're going to miss out on these dollars altogether? Commissioner Harris, you're okay with missing out on the dollars?
I'm objecting to the waiving rules on this side.
I know you said it before. Just for my benefit, will you explain to me again why you object to this grant?
Not that I feel like I need to explain to you.
No, I just...I'm asking as a courtesy because I don't remember what you said.
We don't...we know...these things come up. I'm usually in agreement with them when they do not require match, but that these grant opportunities are coming up more frequently, and they're not budgeted for. And these are items that...I don't know about this particular item. I really don't really understand all the things you're talking about, doing with this money, and I'm still not firm on what that match is going to be. But my problem is that if we're going to entertain grants that require a match, then we should, when we go through the budget process, we should set aside money to be used for that purpose. We have been promised in the past that the match is going to come from here, but that the state is going to do this for us, that the state is going to do that. And once we get into the project, we find out that that match money is no longer there, so now that we...but we're still in the project, so the county's got to come up with the money. I want to push and take this opportunity to force this commission to do a little bit more planning when it comes to these grants, especially the ones that require a match. And I'm...so I'm objecting. I'm not going to vote for it.
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you. What's my next one?
We'll object it to waiving rules, so we're not going to vote for it.
We won't be able to apply for that one, no, sir. Okay, the ADM grant, this one literally came through an email. So these are funds that are allocated to counties to help with stormwater and consulting with our Engineering Department. And if you need any further information, I think our engineer has been briefed on it. We're thinking it's $150,000 with a 35% match.
Who is this?
The ADM. I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. It has a 35% match, which I calculated at 52.5, and consulting with our Engineering Department, this 150,000 would help with a study in Lake O'Stele Soul.
For what?
A study.
A study for what?
Stormwater mitigation.
So we're just going after the money because it's available and do a study? What are we going to do with the study?
Well, Commissioner Harris, one thing it does, it, you know, if we do the studies, it's going to help us in the future if we continue to pursue, like, federal funding opportunities for us to do this now.
Are we pursuing? I mean, what are we pursuing for? What are we going to use it for specifically?
Specifically, it will be used to help towards to pay for a study to address the flooding issues, and George can tell you more about that than I can, that they're played with Lake O'Stele Soul.
Have you done any work out there?
We've looked at it several times, and we've done some...
Do you have...do you have a plan already for that, for doing something out there?
The only plan we've got is one that couldn't be able to table it yet properly.
Yeah, this is...this requires a match as well.
It does have a match, yes, sir.
That's 35%.
It has a 35% match.
Yeah, I'm not...I'm going to object to raising rules for this.
This one is future agenda item, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we've talked about this particular community in the past on more than one occasion, and the Engineering Department have always taken the position that it would cost too much to address that issue. So I'm just wondering, is that going to change as a result of the study?
No, with the study, it gives you a dollar amount because we don't know what too much is. And so if you get a dollar amount, at least we'll have something to match it against, and you can say, well, it's going to cost, you know, $4 million to fix the problem. So if we're pursuing federal grants, we will have something in writing from a study showing that this is what that money would be used for, and we'll know whether we need to pursue one grant or several grants to address and correct the issue. It just helps to have a dollar amount and know what our goal is and we're working towards.
How much is the match?
The match is 35%, so it's 52.5.
$52,000?
52.5.
You know, I really, really should this commission vote to do this. I want to see the study.
Yes, sir, most definitely. Most definitely.
I mean, these things, I mean, I am fully supportive of seeking grants to help us with things that we want to do, not getting grants and then thinking about something to do with it later. We shouldn't map this out. That area out there in southwest Montgomery has not been on the minds of anybody around here for a long time, and we tried real hard to get something done out there, and we tried for grants and everything like that. So, you know, I agree that if we can do something, let's do that, but we need to really take a look at this whole idea of seeking out grants and make sure that when we seek them out, number one, if it requires a match, we know where that money is going to come from, we know we have that money, we've in fact budgeted for that money. And the other thing is we have these projects, we know what we're going to do with the money, and we know what project is going to be taken care of with it, not just get a grant to have the money in case we want to do something with it.
George, I have a question regarding this neighborhood. Seven or eight years ago, six years ago, however long ago it was, we took a deep dive into helping them, and my recollection is the majority of the issue with...I mean, I know what their issues are. It was a poorly developed tract of land, and the developers are bankrupt and/or dead. But for...from the county's perspective, a lot of the problem was the issues were on private property. So while there was a little bit of, you know, the drainage issue that we could help with and change out pipes and whatnot, there wasn't a lot we could do because the problems were on private property. Has that changed? It's still...so, you know, my guess is we do a study, and we find out that the majority of the work is going to be needed on private property, and we're not going to be able to do it anyway. I mean, it's an unfortunate situation, but it is solidly on private property, and the role of government is not to repair private property. Okay. Thank you.
Regina, not to go back to the first one with the parks, but one thing that I did forget to mention that ADA, both of those projects are ADA projects that we're going to have to do at some point. They're going to force us, the parks, the walking trails, and the parking lot. So those both are ADA compliant issues that we have now that we're going to have to do sometime, but just want to make sure we understood that, so.
Yes, sir.
Anything else for Regina?
I have another one.
CDBG?
Okay.
CDBG.
CDBG. This is...I sent each of you an email. If you recall, the districts 1, 2, 4, and 5 each held a citizens' participation meeting to gather information, not only for a possible CDBG project, but just to gather the overall needs of the constituents in your district. I sent you an email probably two to three weeks ago summarizing the top three issues in each of those districts. That was in preparation so that we can prepare, should you approve it, to submit an application and to vote for you to submit an application no later than June 6th, because depending on what project we select, there's a lot of preliminary work that has to be done ahead of it. So one thing, if you recall from your email, that popped up in each district was housing rehab. It's a shovel-ready project that will go actually dovetail what we're doing in critical home repair, and it will help stretch those dollars because one of our goals is to find federal dollars to help stretch our ARPA dollars. So those projects, we proposed housing rehab as the activity. That grant application deadline is July 24th. The maximum amount is 500,000, and the match on that is 10%, which I calculate at 50,000.
Regina, is that...is this program where the homeowner actually puts some money into the improvements, or is it no charge at all for the homeowner?
This one is...there is a small financial piece required by the homeowner, and I have a brochure for each of you that I was supposed to bring and put on your thing, and I forgot. I apologize. I hand it to you after the meeting.
Because who did it? Eastwood Villa?
Eastwood Villa is the neighborhood that have benefited the most from the housing rehab program.
They put a little money each one, and you need your homeowner to put a little money into it, so that doesn't coincide with our match. That's entirely separate.
That's entirely separate.
But didn't the homeowner match satisfy whatever requirements the county may have been obligated to make on the project that we're talking about for Eastwood Villa? We didn't put anything in it because the homeowners came with their match.
I would have asked Greg Clark that. I don't...I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah. Now, in terms of this particular grant application, is the recommendation to combine this funding, if we are successful in obtaining this grant, with the ARPA funding that has been allocated toward critical home repair?
Well, essentially, yes. It wouldn't necessarily be combined, but it will be used to help when we run short of ARPA dollars. Then it will be used to help with other projects. So if we're ARPA dollars, we plan 150 homes, this may enable us to be able to do a few more. I can't give you an exact number of how many more because, as Greg Clark said, it depends on what issues they find in the homes.
And so if we're successful with this grant, we're not limited to one particular district?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir.
Thank you.
Florence, that'd be the next agenda.
I think that does it for me. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Terry Reynolds with Levitate.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Here this morning to ask the commission to consider waiving rules on future resolutions regarding the ARPA expenditures. The reason for that is for efficiencies perspective. For example, the next round of resolutions would be multimodal investments, which is a fancy word for trails, the emergency service vehicles, and the camera surveillance in the unincorporated areas. We are working with the city on the trails to figure out which department that would best be housed in. We do not know that today. So if we wait, we would have to put it on your agenda for the 6th and then vote on it at the next meeting. So we're trying to just close the gap and get these funds allocated and obligated at certain departments. As you all may know, there's some legislation pending before U.S. Congress to start the clawback process of some ARPA dollars. So we think...excuse me. We think it's really important to go ahead and get these funds obligated to departments as quickly as possible. We are not trying to thwart the communication process. We are always available to answer questions. We can send email updates on exactly what you'll be getting well in advance, and if you all will allow us to, we're happy to present at the work session before you vote on these items. But we've, you know, we've been talking about these items for a while, so we feel like everyone is very familiar with where we're going with the program. You should have in your packet a kind of a schedule of the next set of proposed resolutions. So what we would do on the 6th would again be trails, emergency service vehicles in the unincorporated areas, camera surveillance in unincorporated areas. Then the next set of resolutions would be on the 20th. That would be for Baptist, Jackson, Kershaw YMCA, and the Domestic Violence Consortium. We're in the process...we've had several calls with Baptist, Jackson, and the Domestic Violence Consortium of working through their compliance processes. So we expect, if they get that information back to us, to be able to provide you a budget of exactly how they would spend those dollars well in advance of the June 20th meeting. The final grouping would be those large, the two large projects that are outstanding, which would be the traditional sewer projects and then community centers. Of course, that's pending on getting some shape to what that community center investment looks like. And then on the traditional sewer, you know, we're working with the Water Board to finalize a scope of a MOU, and I know we've shared that with leadership, but we're getting close on that. So we are very hopeful that we will have that ready for you all by July. But wanted to ask your permission to do that and get those in front of you so we can save ourselves a few weeks on getting these resolutions.
Terry, on the June 6th, if you're going to have that one, you're asking us to waive rules on June 6th?
Yes.
If you have it ready, we can put it on the agenda. Couldn't we, Florence? Go ahead and put that on the agenda to...for the June 6th meeting, we won't have to waive rules then.
Okay. Well, we don't have the resolutions ready because what we... Okay. Well, we don't have the resolutions ready because what we want to do is include in the resolution which department would be responsible for that project. So for example, with trails, it would go to the city. The city would manage that project. We want to be able to tell you who your point of contact would be at the city, who would be letting those, um, bids for the work to, to lay those trails, all of those details. Uh, and we just don't have that today. We're likely to have it tomorrow or the next day. And we could get those resolutions to you as soon as we have that, that detail. But we just hate to lose two weeks because we, because of a day delay in getting the information that we need.
Is there any objection from the commission if we do get?
I'm, I'm not, I'm objecting. I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote on anything I haven't seen.
No, I wasn't going to say that. I was going to make sure we saw it before, but we'll just leave it like it is. On June 6th, we can waive rules if we so choose.
Okay. That sounds good.
Ter, Terry, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Terry, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
This, this whole process, uh, with the ARPA dollars and, and Montgomery Thrive is, is becoming a source of frustration. You know, we seem to have been dragging our feet for the past two years. I know we say we want to make sure that we invest the money properly and that we satisfy all the treasury guidelines. I understand that. But now to say that we want to move, you know, with a little bit more urgency because of the possibility of clawback is really very frustrating to hear that, particularly in light of the fact that we've been advocating, at least I have, for use of these dollars in the appropriate manner, serving some of these low-income communities, historically disadvantaged communities, which were supposed to be the, the beneficiaries of these dollars. But we hadn't done anything in the low-income communities or those that have been, uh, historically disadvantaged, all the qualified census tract, all those other areas where treasury guidelines, uh, addresses, uh, these problems uh, that, that these individuals and communities have suffered, uh, and has been exaggerated by the pandemic. So to say that we're concerned about clawbacks is really very, very frustrating, uh, at this point in time.
Well, I understand that, Commissioner. And, and really what we're trying to do again is get the money obligated to a department. All right? We still have to go through the compliance process, which is very tedious. And we have a, a database of hours and hours of calls with these prospective sub recipients and beneficiaries that I'm happy to share. Uh, so you can see the amount of questions and, and information that we're getting from them. I've got a book in my office for the CARESTAR compliance. It is over 500 pages. So it, it is a very tedious process and I can imagine that being frustrating. What we're trying to accomplish now is more technical in nature in that we believe that if we allocate and obligate this money to departments, that satisfies that deadline that the federal government has given local governments of an obligation deadline of December 31st, 2024. All right? So we want to go ahead and do that in the event that there's some federal clawback. We've already got the money obligated to departments. We will still have to go through the compliance process. We will still have to make sure that every beneficiary meets the checklist of, um, requirements that we've given them. And then for sub recipients, it's even more complex. There's nothing that we can do to change that. And I, and I can imagine how it's frustrating for you because a lot of it is dependent on getting that right information so that we can check that box and say that we're ready to move forward. But again, this is more technical in nature. We want to get this money obligated to departments so that we can focus on launching these programs and not worry about a potential clawback should that happen.
Well, speak just for a minute, please, on the, the sewer situation. Um, we're talking about within the city limits of Montgomery primarily. And we can't seem to, to move that forward. What is the holdup with the, I know we're at their mercy, Water, Working, Sanitary Sewer Board. What do the lawyers need? I've, and I think I've mentioned once or twice to you that they ought to write it, uh, in a manner that satisfies them. We seem to be dragging our feet on that too. And I understand that someone is saying the price is going up. So I hope that is not an attempt just to, uh, dismantle that program altogether.
Well, so the, the MOU, we do have an MOU that the attorneys at the water board have reviewed, that they have okayed and that we have okayed as Levitate. Now, we've shared that with this county and city attorneys for review. So that is in place. Uh, it has not been signed or executed by your body, the city, or the water board yet. Now where we are is the price. Uh, and you are correct. What we have been told is that there is a possibility that that price may be more than what was initially scoped. Um, and so what we have asked and requested is that they come back with, uh, what they believe to be an accurate cost estimate. Um, I, I have had this conversation directly with Mr. Henderson and we've been talking regularly for the last week or so. And it is critically important that this proj, project is at a starting place at the beginning of the year. You will need the three full years to get this done. So I would encourage you all to continue your discussions with members of the water board and leadership over there. We are working on the, the legal negotiation of the MOU. But I, I think, you know, really moving the project along is probably more within the body's wheelhouse than it is of ours. Uh, but as far as an actual MOU, we, we're close. We have the document. We just have to have that price scoping correct.
Yeah, and the price has increased 33%. It's up to 30 million. The 20 million went to 30.
That's right. That's the, that's the loose estimate. But, um, Mr. Henderson is working with engineers. They will get you all back a, a detailed estimate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Uh, Ms. Beasley with HMFI is here to discuss item number two.
Good morning to you all.
Morning.
I am here to request your permission to apply for the Juvenile Justice Grant. It is a $100,000 grant and there is no match.
Magic word.
I learned that quickly, uh, today. And just to give a little bit, and again, I, I'm always transparent. First time presenting, for us with the grant, it will afford us the opportunity to expand the direction that we're going, our Open Doors program. And I do have brochures as it is currently, uh, in effect. We have found that it's going to be crucial because right now we are focused on children who are affected by a local homicide. They hear, see, or in the area when it takes place. But what we found is that it will be crucial to expand that to the adults. Uh, specifically the mother who's lost a son, the grandmother, grandson, you know, as we all hear the various unfortunate situations that are happening in our community. When a family calls for the child, the focus right now is on the child or any children in the home. But in our application, we are working to expand that to the adults. Uh, specifically wanting to have an onsite counselor that will work with the adults. And specifically what we found is the children have Medicaid. They have some type of insurance. The adults don't. So having that onsite counselor will provide the opportunity to provide them the services that they need, uh, following, following the unfortunate homicide. Also, we want to add to our investigators, uh, what happens is a case officer, a case officer actually goes out to a scene, an unfortunate scene, and we want to make sure that they are safe when that occurs. We also want to look at, uh, conferences that the staff can attend to learn more about the entire process. Yes, sir.
I want to make sure we have a little time for questions.
Yes.
Any commissioners having questions, Ms. Beasley?
This is, this is the program that, that addresses, uh, young people who've actually witnessed violent crime with professional counseling and that type of thing. And these same type of counselors, professionals will, will be made available to the adults in this situation?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Uh, what, you gonna, you, you contract with these professionals?
Yes. Uh, actually, we have one and we, we are in the process of looking for others. But again, the, the catch is the children are pretty much covered, be it through all kids or Medicaid. And the reason for the onsite counselor will help us to be able to do a, uh, professional services or contract with a independent counseling agency or professional.
All right. Well, thank you. You can be next agenda then. Thank you.
Now, she's asking.
No match. Waive rules. I'm sorry.
No match. I don't have any objection.
Any objection to waiving rules on that item? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another waived rule item to consider, and that's a resolution naming the fourth floor judicial conference room in the Phelps Price Justice Center as the Judge Johnny Hardwick Conference Room. The, um, the circuit judges have asked that, that you all make this resolution and approve this. And a resolution will be presented to Judge Hardwick at the, um, rededication ceremony on May 24th.
And what, the resolution has, is coming down the line for your signature. Is any objection to waiving rules on this one?
I just, is it okay? The, the, I made a correction on there. Resolution's been made.
Okay. So we need to wait and sign it after it's reprinted? Okay. Okay.
I don't have any objection with, with the correction.
Any objections? Okay.
The next item to be considered is a professional, a professional services contract with Dominion Resources for the 2023 tax sale. Allison is here if you have any questions about that.
Any questions for Allison on that? Allison, you come on down, but.
I can at least say good morning.
Yeah.
And let you know that if you didn't read the contract, the, the tax sale is June 7th, Wednesday. We anticipate it to be three days again. Um, we're averaging about 1,200 to 1,300 parcels each year.
All right.
Next, we'll hear from Parks and Recreation Director James Williams and Ann Sykes, President of the Montgomery Education Foundation.
Good morning. We're here today, uh, not asking for anything, but, uh, just want to, uh, give you a brief summary and update on our upcoming summer program, Montgomery County Parks and Recreation, uh, which will start June the 5th and run through July 28th. Uh, this is a eight, eight-week program, uh, which consists of kids, youth 6 through 14. I'll be real brief and I'll turn it over to Ann, but just a little history of Montgomery County Parks and Rec, Recreation. It's been well over 10 years, I think, Ann, we've had this partnership where I don't know who reached out to who, but it was, we need something more than just activities, basketball and swimming during the summer, educational component. And I think that's where the book mobile came into place. At that time, the county only had one recreation center, which was Flatwood Community Center. And Ann Sykes agreed and partnered with us to do a reading program to implement that into our summer program. Uh, we've now reached out with our second facility down at the Montgomery County Activity Center, not only with our reading program, but we have numerous other activities that we offer other than just your basic, uh, summer programs. Some of the partnerships we have, again, is with the Montgomery Education Foundation, the YMCA, where we not only just do swimming, but we, when I say we, the county, we offer swim lesson. I'm not saying like with the city where they just swim. We provide lessons for our youth to learn how to swim. We also partner with MPS as far as transportation. Uh, well over 10 years ago, we only had one bus, uh, for transportation. We now have three buses, five different sites, uh, three drivers. And those drivers have been with us over the years, many years, and have been committed, even with the salary increase with the, with MPS for summer programs. They've always committed to come back and say, we want to work for Montgomery County, uh, even though the pay is less. Uh, Jimmy Smitherman has been good with us in partnership with the county extension, with Raze Bed Guardings, Health and Wellness. And that's just a few of our programs that we do have to offer. And now I would like for Ann, and she would speak a little bit on what we're going to offer this summer. Again, we always try to think outside the box or my vision is how can we make it better? How can we leave it better? And so Ann will speak a little bit and she has some representatives here as well if they would like to speak.
Thank you so much, James and Coach. Hate to tell you, it's been 20 years. Time flies. Those bookmobiles were going deep in the county early on. And I want to just say, first of all, thank you for past and present support and, and being a partner with this work. We always start our summer with planning how we first address our students that are deepest in the county, that have least amount of access to many of the other programs that go on. And so it informs our planning and our work and our programs every year. And so starting with getting those reading on wheel bus and then it became buses deep down the county has evolved over the years. Very quickly, it's your place. I think you'll remember MGM Reads last summer. This will be our fourth summer. Every child, first of all, needs to continue reading during the summer, but not just any book. We look for books that are, um, we use this analogy, mirrors to see themselves, windows to see others, and sliding glass doors to step through to other places and experiences. That's the books that our children need. We bring books that are chosen, that, we choose the stories to represent the diverse lives and experiences of our community. It is intentional in each package with ongoing activities and for both the home and also we'll be using those in the, um, uh, Parks and Recreation Centers. Children need books in their home and this helps them create a library every summer. So they'll get 10 books, five weeks, a package every week with a fiction, nonfiction. I've given each one of you a package. If you have children at home, use it, grandchildren, or share it with another child. Um, those are from last year. Those are just one of the samples. But the books are fabulous, um, and we get far more requests than we can, can fill. Um, in addition, with this year, we're going to be providing training. I'm so impressed. They have gathered up, I think, three reading professional teachers to be at the centers. So the support we give has even more, um, breadth of what we can provide in activities and for those coaches and for those readers. So, uh, we're going to have staff do that training. Um, we've done 12,000 books distributed since 2020. This year, we're going to do 11,000 books for a total of 23,000 books. That's, we are so excited about this year. We thank you. Your support helps make that happen. That's a huge leap. It's a lot of books to carry. We're excited about it. Our office, we can barely climb around it. The county sites will be serving, of course, will be Sheridan Heights, which is filling in for Flatwood, Warrior Hill, Shiloh, and Hope Hall. Did I get those right? All right.
Is it Hope Hall? Is that the other one?
Hope Hall.
Okay.
Right. Um, and we're going to be serving all the children participating in all the YMCA programs. So we're going to get really deep penetration of distribution and access this summer, which we're very proud about. Very quickly, I'm going to move to though, what y'all will be more excited about in some ways because it's new. Starbase, last year we offered, we have the privilege of, um, managing the Department of Defense Starbase STEM Program on an annual basis at, at Maxwell. We're serving, this year will be more than 4,000 students and growing just during the school year. They're fifth graders. But the summer program has been developed and we're now offering it for the second year and expanded greatly for all of the county Parks and Rec student seats we are reserving for them. So I'd like for Kirk Alexander, our director, stand up. Aisha Dejournette, who is our, uh, 2.0 instructor and Kirk, I'm sorry, Kirk's here, Ben, um, Ben Kruegel, who's our 2.0, um, instructor, lead instructor. And so, Florence, but I'm going to just simply ask Kirk very quickly to talk about the 1.0, what the children will be doing and what the 2.0 will be doing.
Good morning. Uh, Starbase Maxwell, we're excited to have the partnership with both, uh, the YMCA, Parks and Recs County, Ann City, and getting all those different groups over to Maxwell, give them that STEM experience and get them exposed to all of the wonderful things that we do in STEM education here at, at Starbase and in Montgomery. So we enjoy doing that. It's a good partnership, working with everyone. Uh, they're going to have three different camps going on. We have our Spirit Robotics and Coding, Lego Mindstorm Robotics, and then we're going to have an engineering camp that those students will take part in at Starbase. Uh, that's more along our 1.0 program. Mr. Kruegel and Ms., uh, Aisha Dejournette, uh, are going to be spearheading the 2.0 program and we're going to take that mobile to, uh, six different sites currently, between, eight sites between the YMCA, Parks and Rec City and County to take the drone program to those locations and get those students who don't have access to that type of, uh, technology and curriculum and get them involved in the summer. And the hopes is to have that culminating event, uh, this summer. You want to talk a little about the event here?
Yeah, we got to be very brief because.
Let me, I'll wrap up. All I'm going to tell you, they're going to have a competition citywide to fly these drones that the kids will also be able to get their recreational license as a drone pilot.
We got time for questions. How long is it though? What, what, what's the duration of it?
Five weeks for the reading program and then it'll be going over about five or six weeks for. six weeks for the Starbase STEM program. All of your kids, those three buses are going to be moving a lot because they're gonna be bringing your kids to make sure they have the transportation to get to these events.
No child left.
No child left.
Well, this is a great program, and I'm glad y'all are being more aggressive in going out and getting these children. Both of my children attended Montgomery Public Schools and never got the opportunity to experience Starbase out at Maxwell. And I always thought that was such a missed opportunity. So a lot of these kids are missing out, and they are being left behind. So thank y'all for being proactive and aggressive.
Starbase is next year. We will not miss any fifth grader. We're now able to take every school every year. So that's.
Well, yeah, good, good.
Plus the summer now. Thank you.
It wasn't y'all's fault that my kids missed out. It was the school.
Okay.
Well, thank y'all so much. Thank y'all so much.
Next, we'll hear from Becky Saunders, Vice President of Development with Liberty Learning Foundation.
Good morning. Thank you so much for allowing me to come and speak to you this morning. Really quickly, first thing I want to do is thank you for your service to our community because without you, we would not live in this community that is thriving, that is safe, for these students that we are touching each year with Liberty Learning Foundation. We are actually teaching these students to be future leaders in our community. They're gonna be sitting in your chairs one day. I've told you that before. As you know, Liberty Learning Foundation overarching mission is to teach, inspire, and empower our next-great Americans. And so through these programs, we are teaching civics, character, financial responsibility, and career readiness in every school in Montgomery County. We are reaching twenty-six, two thousand six hundred and fifty second-grade students, twenty-nine schools, every second grader in the county, also in Pike Road Schools. We are going in and doing a twelve-week program where we are teaching them what it means to be a super citizen, what it means to hold the most important title, and the roles and responsibilities that go along with that title. We are doing tremendous work. This will be our ninth year going into the schools. We have a great working relationship with the school board, with the superintendent, with the teachers, the principals. And we would like to continue this wonderful work that we're doing. We currently serve forty-nine counties across the state of Alabama. Over sixty thousand students will receive this program this year. And Montgomery County is my home, and I'm so honored that we are able to bring this program to the students here in my county. I think most of you know about what we do in the schools. Do any of you have any questions?
Yeah, I know, Ms. Saunders, you've been doing this since I've been on the commission. I guess you're asking for funding.
I am asking for funding. We work with a lot of county commissions across the state of Alabama. You guys were giving us twenty-five thousand for several years, which was a huge help. The total cost for the program in Montgomery County is ninety-five thousand four hundred dollars. So, you know, the contribution of twenty-five thousand was really helped a lot. We seek funding from a lot of different entities across the community, and we really respectfully would love to have your support of twenty-five thousand again this year.
I know you presented budget in the past. Have you got an updated budget you could send to us?
I sure do. Absolutely. I'll email that. Yeah, I'll email you the number of students, the cost per student, where the money goes. We're a very unique nonprofit in that we have a company in Huntsville that houses our office and pays the salaries of the people who work for us. So every bit of the money that we raise goes back into, right to the kids. And I know Commissioner Sankey came to one of our events this year and was actually honored as a hero. And, you know, we're seeing so many wonderful things with this program across the state and definitely here in Montgomery County.
Any other questions? Well, we'll get the budget. We'll talk about it. We'll discuss it.
I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We got one left on here, don't we? Legislative report, is that the last? That's just for our information.
General information item.
All right.
One thing that, in talking about meeting dates and all, our June meeting, second meeting is June twentieth, and our July meetings are July eleventh and eighteenth. I didn't know if there was any, Chairman Singleton will not be present at the meeting on the twentieth. He'll be attending an economic development event on behalf of the county. If there was any interest in moving the June twentieth meeting to June twenty-seventh, which would, there would be two weeks between the second meeting in June and the first meeting in July.
I don't have a conflict with that.
What was that now? Because.
Moving from the twentieth to the twenty-seventh.
Of June.
June.
June is.
Does anybody have a conflict on the twenty-seventh?
I don't.
I don't have one.
You might be glad to get me out of here.
Well, not necessarily. Is it any reason not to continue with the meeting as scheduled? I mean, you'll be gone. Do we anticipate any controversial issues? I don't see why we just can't leave it as is.
I just hate to miss a meeting. And we're gonna have two weeks or three weeks either way, either three weeks in June or three weeks in July between meetings. So I was hoping we could move it so I wouldn't have to miss a meeting.
Yeah, can we check with Commissioner Moore-Ziegler? And I think three of us have said we don't have a conflict. Can you check with her and see if she has a conflict, and then we can, I mean, do we need to formal, unless we need to formalize this today?
No, we can, we can, if June the sixth is our next meeting, right?
Correct.
So we'd have to waive rules. The quicker we can do it, the better. If we're gonna change, we don't have to change. I don't have to be here. I would prefer to be here for the meeting.
I'm fine with moving it.
Yeah.
So would you like for us to put that on the next agenda and then?
Let's put it on next agenda, and we'll just vote either way. And I'll be good either way. I'd just like to be here if I could. Is there anything else? Oh, it's nine fifty-eight? I'm gonna say two minutes, but I know people won't be back in two minutes. But let's try to start by ten oh three if possible. They give us five minutes. Ten oh three sharp, we'll start the general session.